Mission meeting, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, is seven P M. just after. Um, before we get started, I'd like to, uh, do a little presentation. Uh, we had a commissioner that's a new daddy, uh, Nick Peterson, uh. We appreciate you, we know all the hardworking kids on, uh, having this baby. So we all signed the card for you, but we got a gift for your wife. Uh, congratulations, uh, that's back number three. All right, uh, at this time, uh. Uh, Good News Worship Center, uh, I have to brag about our, uh, our ministry community we got going on. Uh, they've, uh, they volunteering to come up and lead the prayer for us and, uh, uh, and say to lead the pledge of allegiance for us in our community. So, uh, we appreciate it. Brother Donnie, if you want to.
Oh, I'm not worried, we're passionate, Good News Worship Center here in town. Uh, you guys probably know my parents, Darryl and Donna, are their founding pastors. Uh, we've been passionate now since. He's staying, uh, doing everything he's grown, uh, grown and going good, so, uh, we thank him for the opportunity tonight. Also, my wife founded the Ulysses Christian School, uh, is our fifth year. Uh, and so I think we have many, many students that have been to the school.
About forty students.
About forty students total, uh, through the, the school and the homeschool program, so it's going good. Uh, on the bar, this is one of our speakers, Eli Beal. Uh, this is my youngest son, Seth. My niece, Tasha Johnson, you know her, this, that's my sister, this is, uh, my niece Molly Johnson. And, uh, of course, uh, me and Lori, we, uh, we, uh, just thankful to be here, so. Uh, well, you want some pray first or play?
Well, we'll go ahead and start with the, uh, prayers and we'll lead them to the prayer.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose wisdom the liberty and justice are our.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be here tonight. Thanking God that we have the, the privilege and the opportunity, Lord, to, to, to be here and to be able to discuss the things that are going to be, uh, discussed tonight. Thank you for our county mayor, Lord, uh, Mayor Robyn, we thank you for him and all the leadership, all the commissioners that. It's in Henderson County, such a great place to live, it's going to bless into our family, and I know the countless of us, Lord. Tonight, we just pray that, uh, as decisions are made or as things are discussed, it's going to affect all the families in this community. What we thank you that, uh, they have our best interest at heart, for the best of our community and, uh, for everyone here. So we thank you that, Lord, by your spirit, you'll guide them, uh, you'll bring your wisdom into, into this meeting and to all of them, God. And whether there's agreements, disagreements, or anything, God, as scripture says, we can keep the, the unity of the spirit. So tonight, God, let us, uh, even though things may be different, Lord, let us try to maintain unity with one another, Lord, brotherly love and, and, Lord, what you call us to do, Lord, is, is directed at any one of us. So tonight, we just surrender this meeting to you. We thank you for each and every person that's represented here. I speak blessings over their life, God, bless Henderson County, Lord, and bless, uh, all of those that are, uh, that are here to, uh, to do good for our community, especially in this season of generosity and, and giving, God. Help us to be generous people, Lord, and we honor you for that tonight, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, guys, for coming. All right, um. Adam Secretary, you going to call the rope?
Jeff James.
Here.
William Porter. Tommy Page.
Here.
Tommy Seagull.
Here.
Todd Beechman.
Here.
Aaron Wood.
Here.
Matt Minus.
Here.
Blake Sampa.
Here.
Terry Allen.
Here.
Brandon King.
Here.
Andy Anderson.
Here.
Derek Johnson.
Here.
Nick Peterson.
Here.
Joe Ross.
Here.
All right, we have a forum, appreciate that. Uh, Junior Carter told me last month that he wasn't going to be here, he has some, uh, arrangements for family for the holidays. All right, on, uh, number four, discuss approved the November, November sixth, uh, commission meeting minutes. You guys will review those. Their motion to accept. Or any changes. Motion to accept. Todd Beechman, second. Guys, have a head.
The last two years. The construction company. They even got. Uh, supervisor. I can't pass you. We're basically. Have recommended or want to recommend, good, Robyn, you know, make some, like, more recommendations. Sir. Worried on that.
Sir.
And we're going to basically make that go through the commission here, all is our recommendation.
You'll go review some policies today.
Policies on that and we'll see what we come up with on that.
Yes, sir.
But nothing major is also teaching our guy.
Get a motion to accept the minutes.
I saw one.
Aaron Wood, second. Todd, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carter, thank you. Uh, unfinished business, um, in your packets, you have an interlocal landfill agreement. Lena, you may want to speak on this, it's, uh, under unfinished business. I know that, uh, the commission, a year or so ago, attempted to, uh, come up with an agreement. Uh, since then, we've kind of worked on this right here, do you have any comments?
Not really, just y'all, as you can see, it's, it's an agreement, um, that kind of lays out the obligations between the county and the city, uh, regarding these various landfill facilities. It's, uh, something we attempted to, uh, get done between the county and the city a couple of years ago, but, uh, not able to reach an agreement at that time. Uh, mine changes, the city is in agreement with this new agreement as it is.
That's correct.
That's not under changing, I think, I think.
The city voted on it last month, their, their meeting, uh, uh, I, I attended their meeting, presented to them and, uh, see if they, uh, if they were in agreement. Um, uh, they said everything looked good for them, so now, if you guys, um, don't have any changes, want to add something, now's our time to discuss or do what we want to do on this.
Did this something that solid waste?
It did.
Is it a real verified agreement?
It is a, uh, agreement that we can, uh, renegotiate every five years. Uh, it is, uh, it has cleared up a lot of confusion. Uh, inside the agreement, it talks about the city of maintaining the account, I mean, as I was, the county would maintain the account of any proceeds that we, uh, took off the, uh, sold the timber on it, or if we had any other revenue generating activities on any of the landfills, that the city would allocate, give the money to the county, and we'd be the county holder.
To speak to Joe's question, there's, um, back and forth between the county and the city, what financial obligations each of them carry based on the local agreement? Um, ultimately, I think this is a good option to, uh, put some back.
Very well, sir.
I'll just remark that I had a previous agreement, I've looked at quite a bit, and the city and the county have kind of discussing what was going on, and I believe this agreement does, I didn't specify more than the prior agreement. In certain ways, they hopefully, it's going to be the, the mayor's, or, uh, the, like, responsibly and continue and renegotiate after every five years, which, uh, be, you know, brought here from one another, but it is, I think it's a good agreement, it was. A lot of it will depend on what happens in the future beyond what we may be able to hit at, but it's good as it's ordered.
Mike, more for approval.
Here's Joe Ross, made a motion. Jack Johnson. Uh, being that there is, uh, some money going to be allocated here and there, I, I'd like to, uh, call the rope.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tommy Seagull.
Yes.
Todd Beechman.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sampa.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Brandon King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Derek Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff James.
Yes.
All right, number six, new business, six point one, a discuss approved the family justice, uh, grant, uh, Ms. Chris Stampf. Uh, you.
Ms. Anna C. Rock.
Ms. Anna C. Rock, you want to come up? Welcome you to, I know you've been excited all day for this. If you want to, uh, brief the commission on, uh, what they've been reading on for past week, uh, and Megan, I may have some questions from you also, sure.
Uh, so Trish and I sit on the board of the Henderson County Foundation that has taken up, uh, the Family Justice Center as, uh, one project that the foundation is seeking to, um, institute, uh, meaning. Uh, Family Justice Center would provide services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, um, in Henderson County, who are listed at a pretty high rate of domestic assault, um, domestic violence in our community. And other communities that have brought Family Justice Centers have found that victims are more likely to maybe use their services and prevent that cycle of domestic violence in the mountains. Uh, and so they're making a lot of difference in their communities, and that's all we want to start with here in Henderson County. Um, we have, are in process of, upon the government, um, and I think that was listed in the, if commission will provide it, and we're asking the county to partner with us, um, by doing, um, a match of three thousand five hundred for the first facility and then three thousand nine hundred for the facility in the document six.
Have you discussed this with the city?
The city is, is us completely aware of that.
I, I think it's, I think it's a, uh, city, it's a, it's a county grant. This is our family, they come, they come through the county. This is the first round of what potentially could be another grant that, that we've been told that if we do this, this is a free year, starter money, we will pay for the service, the person to be established to get that, uh, Family Justice Center going. And then, once that's going, there'll be another round of funding that we believe we would get to build facility, is what we've been told.
So essentially, uh, what this Family Justice Grant, uh, does is for providing that person, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the wraparound services that we have within our court system, we didn't know, we didn't, obviously, we cost, uh, West Tennessee help, the fa- the foundation rap. It would assist in the communication of this?
It would be a location that would have wrap, West Tennessee legal.
Yes.
Uh, the DA's office, um, and law enforcement.
A one-stop shop where the victim can come.
And we have partnerships, um, agreements.
Sure.
With all those different entities to be present in the facility when we get to the point where we have, um, achieved the grant to build the facility. At this point, the Family Justice Center grant requires that we hire a director early in the process in order to facilitate opening the, uh, the facility by twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah. Megan, what's the, uh, can you verify the, the funding on there as far as the magic year?
Oh, each year, it should be roughly thirty-five hundred and FY twenty-four, and then thirty-nine hundred FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six each year. So altogether, for three years, it'll be eleven thousand three hundred dollars, roughly.
Okay, you see any issues with that in the forecast? Okay.
The, um, the first would, uh, be, um.
It'll be twenty-three. Is it twenty-three?
The grant, let's say, the grants will start January first.
Yeah.
This, twenty-third.
Yeah.
If, it's approved tonight, um, there will be no obligation on the county's part until FY twenty-four, where we have to do five percent of the site coordinator's salary.
They won't affect this year's budget at all when we go into the next FY, yeah.
Is this, this going to be a residential house?
No, it's not a residential.
It's just services.
Services.
What's the dollar amount if you apply by grant? We're paying five percent, they're paying all the rest of the grant, no, like, nine percent.
It's like ten or twenty thousand for three years.
January, and this would be with a vision towards having a facility in here, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, that, uh, this, this will be for three, four years, and then four, um, July first of the fourth year, and we would need to be in functioning, in a building functioning.
Do you have a director?
We have not had a director, but that would need to be done by the, we're, we're.
And building sub-ification would be, be determined?
Be determined, we would, I think, if you still take out of the court.
Right now, yes, sir.
Because this grant only pays for person and supplies, this, this initial grant.
And, you know, as our inventory becomes available as far as building wise, we build new centers, health department moves around, we, we could accommodate, um.
What Jim Terry was talking about, after that, are other grants applicable for building facilities?
Right.
Decision will be from that, actually.
Yes, sir.
Is the director, uh, will it be a paid employee or, uh, volunteer?
Paid employee. No, they classify as a county employee.
So will the candidate, will they clear it, say?
The grant is.
All right.
Does your company have a grant?
After three years of us, of, of grant funding this person?
That's all the goal, we have to approve this every year.
Second.
What's that?
Second, can you get that? What was that?
So, so they're only asking to approve the amount of time for the three-year grant, after that, there's no obligation.
No.
County, unless you choose to make the next grant that we believe will get four building facilities or, or, you know, some more support. Uh, right, right now, I mean, it, everybody in, in Tennessee is, is doing it, and Scott County, though, Scott County has, has a great center over there. So, the whole goal here is just to bring whatever dollars for services for these victims that we can get from the state, bring a partnership. For thirty-five hundred dollars, you get two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, after the grant, after the grant expires, there's no obligation for the county to do anything else, however.
We'll be back.
We may through other funding.
Other programs that have been, that have existed for a while.
We visited Brown School, and we have visited Brown School because of Jack, who has had a great success with their program. Um, we have, we have another Scott County one we plan to visit, because they are, um, financially, I think, compared to us, of course, uh, basically, but, uh, Brown School is compared to us, and it is very, very, very far.
All right, any other questions? Any more comments from you guys?
I guess we can say that, that our goal is to reduce the, the, um, bodies itself, the, uh, to, to make a pathway for these police victims to, um, not go to the green room, we are not, we have, if you, if you'll reiterate, we have got some terrible statistics on that.
Part, part of this, this grant, Joe T., for those that don't know, Joe T., uh, helped facilitate right this grant. Um, part of this is, the language is used in the reentry program that the sheriff's office and Joe T. has already done. So this is another wraparound service now for the family members of the people who gets incarcerated, for them to start receiving services. Or if they're a victim because of someone had an issue, it's part of that overall, uh, reentry program that the state's pushing, they're, they're throwing some, throwing some cash out.
Joe T. involved in it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you look on the, uh, on that page at the bottom, the first page, I think, uh. I think his name's listed on there somewhere.
Is this, uh, is this somebody living in some kind of counseling?
Will be counseling within the facility. Victims on, it's not only the, the, um.
So, so what it allows, Jack, is instead of a victim going to seven different offices, it consolidates into one building. That way, uh, once they get to a, a location, they don't have to be confused and be almost vic- feel victimized again because they're getting pushed to different buildings. So this consolidates that service.
We don't have a director, what about the others, capable of lending to the council, to, to, to all services?
That's not the grant, so we commend that grant services as made to, with their council services in this facility.
Yeah, so we contribute to raft annually so far on my budget, though.
The, uh, the, the, the counseling is contract service, so the grant is paying for some contract services for that, and so, wouldn't be anything that the, the, the commission would be, you know, coming back a month and outside, oh, hey, appreciate what you did there, we need, uh, fifty thousand dollars now for a counselor, that's on, that's on the table. That's a good one. So, we're looking to plot this grant, you may, uh, we have, uh, thank you, look at this.
Five to five, I think, for the.
We got a motion, uh, Todd, I saw, I called, I saw Blake, second. You have that? Call the rope.
Todd Beechman.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sampa.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Brandon King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Derek Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff James.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tommy Seagull.
Yes.
Motion, pass. I'll be in touch, uh, with you guys, uh, tomorrow, see what we got to do and get signed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Next item of business, uh, six point two, budget committee, we have six items on the agenda here. We'll start off with, uh, discuss approve the transfer of solid waste surplus equipment. In your packets, uh, there's an item to be sold or auctioned off, and items to be scrapped. Uh, this was presented to the, uh, uh, Solid Waste Committee. Uh, they recommended you guys for approval on this.
Proceed, we'll go back into the solid waste.
Say again.
Proceed, proceed from this, uh, doing this, we'll go back into solid waste.
Megan.
That's it?
Yep.
As long as you say, tell me what it is, I might check it back.
Yeah. What's your question?
Auction.
Auction, yes.
Public auctions.
Yes, yes.
They'll be listed in the paper.
Well, it, we're entertaining the idea using make-o. That we don't have to pay for an auctioneer here, that we could just do it like that. Yes, sir. Mike, can this stuff be relocated? Can we get it on a trailer and hold there?
It can be relocated.
Okay. Lost T H P in the room. You make a motion to approve, Joe Ross? Nick Peterson, second. Uh, call the rope.
Matt Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sampa.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Brandon King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Derek Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff James.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tommy Seagull.
Yes.
Todd Beechman.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Motion, pass, all right, next item is, uh, discuss approve sheriff's department transfer from drug fund. Sheriff's Department's requesting a transfer from his drug fund to, um, cover the, uh, supplements or stoppings for his dare officers. Um, they teach dare, so he's al- he's asking to do a stopping for that. The sheriff's department is asking to, he's wanting to move money from the drug fund to pay for stoppings for teaching dare. He's got officers that are certified to teach dare, they went to teach, teach at all the elementary schools. It's just to cover their stopping for the year. Uh, what's that, what's the total on that, um? Yeah. The sheriff's only one can authorize the expenditure out of that, it's just a, uh, transfer.
Budget committee, we have the budget.
Yeah, the budget committee's approved. Tommy's got a motion. Jack, second. Call the rope.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Derek Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff James.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tommy Seagull.
Yes.
Todd Beechman.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Linus. Mike Sempson.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Brandon Green.
Yes.
All right. Motion passed. Next item, uh, discuss approve a vehicle for the mayor's office. Request access to a vehicle during duty days, uh, here at the courthouse when I don't have to drive my personal vehicle. Um, I'll reach out to the insurance company with the county and, uh, they advise that I would need a balloon policy if I use my personal vehicle had an accident, someone was to get injured. Uh, so I'm asking county commission to consider, um, assigning me a vehicle to use during a duty day. It would stay here. I have enough vehicles in my driveway. Uh, but anybody, um, my recommendation that if it's here, that not only I'll be allowed to use it, but anybody in the courthouse that needs to do county business be allowed to use. Depending on any of you guys' questions.
You can just make that out. So make sure, ensure, with your own?
Well, I could, but then something was to happen, then I've got three kids and a wife that's, that also would be over that too. And I, I don't think it's fair to bring them into a lawsuit, have to pay more for them.
I was, I was thinking a lot more. Do you have something, could that pay you something add on to your policy to cover what you're doing in county business?
Are you asking questions for that?
Yes.
Are you asking for me to, to add additional insurance? Really not the matter of payment of it, it's just the liability that it puts on my personal business as far as my personal finances and everything else.
But, but if we insure that, if there was a policy to insure, we, we would just have to go over. Now, that would affect, that would even happen. And I mean, you should have a fair start to happen.
All right.
Of course, speaking of being in charge of something, I thought first of all, but, uh, you asked for a vehicle. If, is the sheriff still willing to let us have that vehicle when we do it the proper way?
Yes. Uh, the keys are still, it, it is parked out back if you guys want to do that or wherever the will of permission is.
But we would have to, from the budget meeting, uh, we would have to transfer, we would have to make a motion to transfer that vehicle from his budget to your budget.
Yes. Just to transfer the, uh, the vehicle itself.
And he is located in that, you thought, already?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to transfer that vehicle from his budget to your budget for you to use with your own gas card.
Or both of the other county employees. It's leaving. But what about you?
We need to discuss the line of the sentence. Well, the courthouse has got a county car. Well, we discussed nine documents.
Is your second?
I'll second.
You got a second? Any discussion?
Does it make?
What's that?
The courthouse has a county car.
I know that Gary Pope has one assigned to his office that comes out of his budget, but the courthouse itself doesn't have one. So every elected official, if they do fieldwork, they have access to a vehicle except the mayor's office. There, that's full-time positions. So like Gary Pope, um, Steve Vineyard, uh, Drew Cook even, our E M A. director, has a vehicle that he's assigned. Um, so that does fieldwork. And my duty description, part of that is fieldwork. I just don't sit in the office all day.
So like, like Joe was saying about the gas card, if for a good reason, what, what's your idea of how this can be made?
Well, when I'm not here, if I'm gone, you know, uh, the vehicle, uh, it's gonna stay here. It could be signed out of my office if needed. Uh, Bree is there all day long. Another department that needs to do it can, uh, come get it and take it.
So if each department needs to have a gas card?
Well, we would have to maintain the mileage logs on it because otherwise it would, we don't know who's using it, who's, you have to have, each department have to have it on a pin number.
Let me clarify this. The reason why I set up a gas card was because one of the things that discussed with the budget committee was you was also giving a gas card with the,
Hmm, yes.
That bomb trigger.
Yes.
I've got these figures about it and I've got it. I talked to Dennis Wright, and Dan, and I talked to Danny, and I talked to Dan. None of them had a card, so I've been here for twelve years and nobody's had a card. And they managed to do okay with that. I'm open, I'm open to discussing that, but it's kinda like, when you hit us with that, it's kinda like, uh, the explanation of it, uh, a little bit. They made it okay with that. They all said, where they went out of the county, they went to Henderson or Jackson, anywhere. That they basically, they were reimbursed, that they used the county, uh, went out and checked something in the county that they, uh, they just paid for themselves. But none of them, I don't know about Dennis Wright, had a gas card, but Dan nor Eddie got a gas card either. And, you know, I know Pony had, and I have. I've used my own card to go look for stuff.
I agree, but I don't agree with you on all of this.
But I think,
I mean, I think if we've set it towards to other people in, in the county, if our mayor's asking for a vehicle to use, why are we gonna reimburse mileage that's gonna cost us more? If we have a vehicle that's already not in use, the vehicle's just gonna go down. If the vehicle we use by county official, I don't think we need to think about what we didn't even have, what we need to be looking at, what we're gonna do in the future. I don't think that is a ethically wrong, or if there's anything malicious to happen, they need to look to the future. If there's a vehicle that's not being used, why myself? Why is it gonna reimburse people mileage and cost more money to the county that can be saved? That's just how I feel. But, you know, we can take a vote on it.
Well, I've done, I've done some, some math on it. Um, if, if the county reimburses me mileage with the type of vehicle I have, uh, they're gonna be paying me eleven dollars for twenty-six, if I get, a gallon. Or if I use a vehicle that's sitting here and not in use, and I could spend three dollars a gallon, um, driving the same amount of miles, all it is, whether or not, I don't have to worry about the insurance issue. I can go, I don't have to worry about vehicles here. Uh, if it was something that not any other department, I mean, I, I would, I would agree. But I feel like the mayor's office, whether it's me or the ones in the past, I, um, there's gonna be situations where, that I need to go somewhere and I need to make sure that, uh, I'm doing county business in a county vehicle. So.
Let me clarify something. I didn't say anything about what,
I'm trying.
I'm just saying, I'm telling you, I, I didn't say anything about what happened or anything else. I'm talking like old folks. But there is a question. I told you, I'm open.
Mm-hmm.
But I just wanted the explanation, some figures for what that you got.
Right.
You know, that's, that's all.
Well, I've reached out to the district as far as the Southwest Development District. I talked to Joe Barker. And I asked him, I said, you know, within our district, how many other, uh, county or city mayors have vehicles, um? The ones that do is City of Bolivar, Harden County Mayor, uh, Madison County Mayor, City of Jackson, Brownsville, Lexington. The ones that don't is the City of Henderson or Chesapeake County, McNary County, uh, Selmer and Stanton. So we're kinda, uh, the smaller counties don't. Did Joe Barker receive a car allowance? I don't know what that means, so.
This is a little down, a little off, but I think we can take the car, but Brian lets us have, we need to reimburse them and put it in the sheriff's department. I mean, he's particular, I'd like to see what we were talking about earlier about, so if we get a car for worth fifty thousand dollars, we paid him fifty thousand, transferring money back into that.
Sure.
If you just give us a car.
I, I think that's fair.
Reversing into that.
I agree with that. Uh, I had, uh, I had, uh, Hamlet Motor Company, since it is a Dodge, I had them, if you look in your packets, I got a fair purchase price breakdown on that.
You said that car the sheriff's department got?
Yes.
So just, just to clarify this whole thing, you're saying if we buy this car from sheriff's department, the car's gonna be a car for you to use, but if somebody else needs to use it, they can use it also in the courthouse. You're gonna have a gas card that's attached to that car, right?
I can, or each department that wants it, they can be responsible for their own gas card.
Well, if, if you have a gas card that's attached to that car, then there's no, finance, make it easier for finance department. Is that just being one vehicle coming into that one car? You still didn't get the receipt or whatever.
Well, the problem is the gas card, on the way our, we purchase our gas with fuel card, uh, you have to have a pin number, so we can do it by pin number. So everybody will have to have their own pin number by the department. So cards can stay. You don't have to have multiple cards.
If it's just one card for the car, you need some part having some pin number.
Yes.
Okay. That, that makes it need,
That way it's trackable and, you know, no one's doing nothing.
You have to keep mileage on it, so you know who does what, and where it can be used. I think that inspires us to do it. And this is not an exclusive, uh, county employee, this.
What's?
As far as, uh, who uses it. The parking is exclusive to county employees. Parking, county employee, the parking, right?
Well, the courthouse, not everybody.
Yeah, the courthouse here.
Yeah.
Who bought the car? Who owned the car?
He's not part of the courthouse. He's not the courthouse. He can vote here, we love him.
If you want to rob the car, I'm gonna use it.
He can come here.
Ask the judge if he can buy some drugs or whatever.
Fair. I agree. I agree with that.
If you're gonna get a new car, if you made it from this company. Who gets you a bill to get in the car? So which was, since it's not possible to get them back later, it's be more money for it already is to transfer it to sheriff's department.
Essentially, it's, it's saving versus the fuel mileage.
Yeah.
Andy, you have a question?
You're gonna transfer, um, thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars to sheriff's department.
Motion.
Yeah, I can, I had the same question we talked about.
Well, I mean, that was like the, I guess, after approved, it was actually a bigger source. That, that did differ as far as having that.
What do you mean, how did you amend the law, the commission, how don't we, didn't you call it on the book? And the last time I tried to do that, I was told it was wrong. I heard a couple of that, um, you have to amend something. Call it, we call them, we call them a medicar, and they don't, and we don't want to vote, so that I need to practice. And I need to say, now, now, if somebody wants to,
All right, so. Go ahead, Andy.
Do you have any, or you have any, do you have any kind of estimate about what the, um, the, probably years prior, the mileage reimbursement for the mayors and then, would you have a estimate of that or?
I think I'm gonna look.
I think it's a little bit easier to just track your mileage, turn your mileage, and just not go rushing on the mileage of course. I would cheat it, and I need to just track it.
You got a motion and second?
What is it?
What is it?
Call for a vote, motion.
What is it?
I want your vote.
Yeah, they want your vote. Okay, the motion is to, well, at that time, transfer the, transfer the vehicle that the sheriff is, is allowing us to use. And let the county don't ask for, that's a tax check in. And just, we don't necessarily have to think you have that. But what I'm saying is pretty much, the vehicle with the county already has, that the sheriff was willing to, to allow us to use, transfer that all. And you,
With the gas card.
If y'all wanna give the sheriff, if y'all want for the resolution, we pay the sheriff for it, we do that. I mean, I don't care. Because I don't think we need to spend money on another vehicle, on the sheriff's.
All right, so we got a motion to transfer. It's a county vehicle, yeah. So we got a motion on the floor to transfer the vehicle and the gas card, well, a new gas card over to the courthouse.
I'm second to the motion.
All right, we, their motion's second. You're, we already got a second, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike's got a second. Jack, what's your question?
I got, who, uh, would we are gonna transfer a claim from the mayor's place to the sheriff's place? Is that part of the thing?
We'll do that on the next motion.
Okay, how, how has that in the past, have there, have there other departments that have got vehicles from sheriff's department? And how they work that way? I just wanted to hear folks.
I think the, uh, sheriff's department, um, uh, in the last minute, I think in September, transferred vehicles to the school board with no money transferred. Right. Um, My wife said, okay.
And some vehicles out there, in the sheriff's department.
We're gonna revisit that policy team.
All right, it's called a rope.
I have one question, uh, a little quick. Why would we have to take out a mayor's budget, we're gonna live by, why would not come out and, and do that budget? What I just want, why would it come out of, maybe we can live with it, but I,
I was gonna come from an undesigned financial, ask y'all for some more money. You're right, it's, it should come out every, every day.
If, if we're saying all, all courthouse personnel have access, if they were using, why would the mayor come up with that paper?
I agree.
Before we go, I got a question. If they've done this before with the school board, we're gonna do it below the bar, we've just gotta transfer to them with no money base. Why can't we just do the same thing right here? There's no strange attached to it.
I, I have a problem with them managing transfers. So the gun policy is like,
Okay, the sheriff's not asking for any money.
That's right. That's, that's strange.
So.
That was not, like I said, both of those.
I, I would like to say one thing, back to what it is. That was my suggestion, so we're kinda moving ahead, what did the guidelines are, but I'm looking to forget that in, in the future.
Okay.
Let's do that. That's something I would like to say, have nothing to do with it.
Thank you, please. All right.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Dimes, no. Tommy Perry.
Yes.
Tony Seagull, yes. Aaron Wood. Brandon Green.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
No.
Jack Johnson.
No.
What we got?
No. Tom Sam.
All right. Motion carried. All right. Next item, uh, discuss approve UT ag extension requests. A lot of, uh, at the floor.
I don't know, I'll just get you forward.
Uh,
uh, we just got an opportunity on UT extension, I want to thank you, look, here we are. Uh, my second argument is for a further request, I said, uh, we've got three sisters right now, it's like the third you out. Uh, I've been soliciting UT for some more money, and then I need a little bit more work to finish up a full-time position, so. For about the time we get hired this year, there's gonna be, kind of, probably in March, it's April, time we do advertisements and all those things to get that done. So it'll be a bunch of money this year. I think I've had that in a, a budget committee package, uh, last week, so. So that's just for money to kind of finish it up, have a full-time benefit without a position. And hopefully going forward, we can just have that in our budget, uh, going forward.
Sixty-two hundred.
That's what I'm gonna give you, sixty-two hundred.
For the remainder, because of the main of the year.
And that gives you a full-time position with a hundred percent benefit here in town.
State's matching.
State's putting in ten, the two school systems are putting in thirty-two. And the way we do it on the school system is based off enrollment. So the city schools have about twenty percent of the enrollment, county schools have about eighty. So that's how they pay. It was county pay.
So it's a shared funding.
Yeah, you know, of course, I know I'm kind of tall myself, but on the bus here, I got four different funding sources. Uh, to keep, keep moving down the road, so. Anyway, that's what I'd ask, we'll try and get that to a full-time position, uh, because we sure need it. Anyway, that's what I'd ask, we try to get that to a full-time position, uh, because we sure need it.
Is it a full-time position?
It would be, well, the government should get that number defined.
We got that number.
I would say it's about twelve thousand, you know, if they're finishing up for a full-time.
I think it's a thousand thirty-three a month as well on the sheet.
Thousand thirty a month.
That's our problem.
Yes.
That would be your part of the county, but it doesn't really, really matter.
I used to be on that committee, our, our weight problem really improved in the last few years, and just around once a thing.
That, that's got a motion, second, Nick Peterson? All the room.
Jeff Dunn.
Yes.
Tommy Pagan.
Yes.
Tommy Sigal.
Yes.
Eric Wood.
Yes.
Matt Magnus.
Yes.
Light Samuel.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Ryan King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Motion passed, alright, thank you, uh, next item is a, discuss approved rescue squad funding request. Rescue squad?
Uh, no, our offer request, uh, was to purchase a new set of family operated action vehicles, and also one new truck, uh, for those of two thousand and five, or four fifty, uh, a hundred and nineteen thousand miles. Uh, I think it's ninety-nine and one thirty, because we have a couple of all that, uh, we'll give you those. There's no, no calls moving forward. Uh, we had one we got told just past year, that we had the, we currently use insurance money for that.
What type of?
Uh, we still owe thirty, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I, I, we got a budget.
A budget? Yeah. Yes, I gave one to the mayor. Yes, we have all of them together, about, before we get our check, I guess, I have to go, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I just, you want to hear that? Is there discussion with some of y'all in the county department?
There's been discussion in the past.
Okay. If something comes up that, for that particular part, or what the needs are right here, or we can set it.
If that ever happens, that stuff will be transferred.
Well, I heard that's, that, that's wrong, because you're, because you're a.
Well, we would have to go on.
That's wrong to y'all, and if you're members decide.
It would, it would, that hurts.
That they, that you back to the county, that, that basically, technically, I think, split that money.
No, not in charge of the stuff. It's, it's not split.
What's, what's the charge?
Yeah, the charge, the charge. Well, we can't take any money, I can't accept any money, to, to donation and swap, we work the homes, I don't, I don't pay for the fee.
Hey, I might name it, uh, street talk is, whether y'all are going to give it up to the fire department.
That's, that's not been discussed in the long term, I've, I've heard that over the last, well, it's not been discussed in the long term. So, if, if we decide to do that, uh, I'm sure you can stop us. Do I know if you could stop us, instead of funding y'all, giving you a hundred thousand dollars for the trucks? We have to say something. No, I'm good with that. Yes, we're all good with that. Not effort, everything, I think, is, people may be there, uh, soon, it's a better.
What's that feel of deciding that? This, this recipe.
Uh, I bet the bar. I can, uh, I wanna say it's around three eighty. What, what's the time on the meeting? Uh, on needing the money, uh, I mean, if, if we done this, you're talking about, talking about twelve sixteen weeks on the tools. Probably about the same time on the truck, so, it's a matter of. I mean, our money would have to be spent for what, twenty, twenty-six, if they ever had to.
Twenty-four, W O B A.
W O B A is twenty-four, so. I, I'm, I'm not trying to get at you, I'm just wondering, if what, everybody's in here, it's happened, does that affect what we would need to do right here, for the, for the money to be signed? How long have you, live members, have not discussed it? Maybe, if that's, I mean, two years ago. But that was when COVID happened, and everything stopped, and all that, it really didn't go all that far, and we talked about it many months ago. I think we're still not discussed, but, given that it's not.
I heard it live, so, can we, uh, put this off a little bit, so we get some clarification about the car?
Yes.
We, we, we still got some funding, there'll be a while, so, I mean.
We've got a while, I look at, and, couldn't make it without the risk, but I, I like to look at, make sure that they care of the county stuff.
Okay.
There's nothing to say, no. That water's settled, it was more, I hear it did, yeah.
It's not, members have not discussed.
Got a little bit of fire if we get smoke.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, uh. I'm not good with that. It's kind of, that, that, that's not what we're doing, I'm, I'm, that's, that's, before we do, like, I'll, I'll, I'll get you, I'll, 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 I'll look for it, for you, you go, I'll, 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 I'll.
Alright, next item, uh, discuss approved offer funding budget. For you, Megan's got a, uh, list of budget amendments, uh, the budget committee recommended bringing all these items at once.
Make a motion for consideration by background, so that we can approve and then, uh, each department individually, or separate.
Alright, got a motion to, uh, separate. Jack, you got a second? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, we'll separate it, go, uh, by funding line item. Uh, first, uh, line item is, uh, the sheriff's department. That should be in your packets there. Next, county sheriff's department.
I'll let you go down in the back, alright?
You'll see a breakdown, offer funds, uh, department cost sheets. Alright, the sheriff's department, I think it says page twenty, thirty-five body one cameras, forty portable radios. Some, uh, launcher and, uh, included canisters for the forty millimeter ammunition, uh, some gear for the special ops. The workhouse has got a food tray, sleeping mats, pitch four inch upright refrigerator, seventy-two inch under camera refrigerator. Uh, I think the maintenance charge guys had already approved that, I believe. Uh, a generator for the kitchen, three washers, three dryers, cameras and radios for the jail, and a body scanner.
You already heard the minimum strike, is it even?
It's not included.
It's not included. Uh, a couple of here is the video cameras and the body scan. We got, we got a couple of something, uh, left?
I believe that it's in the, uh, the package. If y'all wanna push this to the next meeting, want the sheriff to be here to explain it, we can do that. Got a motion for that?
Make a motion, go ahead, put it to the next meeting.
What's that?
Make a motion, put it to the next meeting.
Motion to move it to the next meeting, have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, moving down to chance record. Chance record. She's got her options listed there. Seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-nine. Everybody found that document? Microsoft Word, Excel, three desktop computers, five scanners.
Is that part of the, is that part of the?
She is not.
Motion. Postpone the next meeting.
Postpone the next meeting? All in favor, we got a second? Got a second, all in favor, say aye. Register of deeds. We're gonna go with the same. There's no one here for register of deeds, we're gonna go with the same, make the motion. Second? All in favor, say aye. Health department, you guys have already discussed that, we've already advocated that funding in a prior meeting. Uh, we just need to do the transfer, kind of get a, uh, that's for the new health department facility.
I make a motion to transfer the, oh, yeah.
Got a motion to transfer the health department fund?
I got a question, that's your second, man.
Okay.
Was, was that not stipulated, property being part of that?
Yes, so, what, what we can do is, is transfer the money over pending the, uh, the property, once we get an evaluation of that. But we need to allocate the monies for the, uh, for the contract. Motion is second, call the room.
Uh, Jeff Dunn.
Yes.
Tommy Pagan.
Yes.
Tommy Sigal.
Yes.
Eric Wood.
Yes.
Mike Magnus.
Yes.
Light Samuel.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Ryan King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Seth Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson. Joe Ross.
Alright, motion carried, next thing, fire department, uh, chief Murphy's not here, and I was standing right here, he is, look, there he is. I'm calling mine, chief, I didn't see him. Come on up. If you don't mind, sir. Alright, so.
If there are any questions, uh, breathing apparatus, there is a notation on there, that you don't have big animal for it. The original proposal, which was, uh, which was back in June, uh, had firefighting boots on it. I applied and received the grant for those boots, so therefore, I came on, and this request to revise, uh, that petition is included in this, taking those off, the breathing apparatus, the big, uh, FEMA fire crack grant that we buy for each year, that saves us hundreds of thousands of local tax dollars over the years, uh, that is unfortunate, we get several of them. But breathing apparatus, it actually more than that number that I've applied for, the sixteen sets are the ones that basically are not, they're not only out of name, we can't even get part of that. So, we're waiting to hear when it's granted, the reason for the note on that is to, if I'm fortunate to get this grant, hopefully, we're going here within the next month or so, or two. Then, we're going to hold about turnout a year with that money, instead of breathing apparatus, and a note that's made on there. Because within two or three years, I'm gonna have to be looking at buying more protected gear, uh, which averages about fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a set now, for a firefighter. It's expensive, so, realistically, it's, uh, the gear available, uh, that's why I put that on the grant, but, we don't know, this is the fourth year on breathing apparatus. Or, or applications, and, so.
Three hundred nine thousand seventy-five is the amount we need now.
That's the total amount, that is the total amount, it's all, everything on there is, is also prioritized in the order of need, the generators being most important. These fire stations, we've experienced over the years, if they do not have emergency backup power, we've got all kinds of problems. Firefighters cannot even charge their patrons to get the emergency dollars, if they don't have power at home, uh, these fire stations have the power, uh, and they got places, they'll, they can charge their patrons, uh, we, the stations can even provide meals, emergency meals, in, in the community, if they've got power. That, that is the number one right now priority, uh, and of course, the most expensive. Uh, those generators, by the way, are on state contract, uh, so, if you approve this, authorize this, uh, these means, uh, I'll be getting immediately with finance director and working out to get these generators over, uh, the, we're, we're recently updated, all of the quotes are in there, if you can see how recent they are. Uh, the original, uh, request, they averaged around ten thousand dollars, they went up like two thousand dollars since the original request. So that's how much stuff can go up, uh, so, uh, we're ready to, to be installed, and the stations that do not have, uh, three, three stations on there, were discussing reimbursement, because they raised the funds to donations and fish drives and other things to buy the generators they got. Now, I, I think everyone initially agreed to, that it's only fair to them to, uh, because they took the burden of very recent.
But like, I have hour, jam, rain, but, there's any reimbursement for those stations.
Got a motion to, uh, approve, you got a second? Any discussion? Call the room.
Tommy Pagan.
Yes.
Tommy Sigal.
Yes.
Eric Wood.
Yes.
Matt Magnus.
Yes.
Light Samuel.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Ryan King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yeah.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yeah.
Jeff Dunn.
Yes.
Thank you.
The actual department, and the fire members, and me, I really appreciate it.
I was excited about the generators, hey, Lynn, I, I know you will, but when you, uh, start getting the generators installed or ordered, we'll, we'll ask another.
I'll be getting the finance director on that, especially those who.
Yeah, that's, that's big for the communities.
Yes.
County maintenance, uh, I'll fill in for that, Lovester, he and I talked about purchasing a new lawnmower for the county maintenance department, uh, Capota. About to get that ordered.
Is there a reason why we're getting a Capota?
It's cheaper.
It is, it needs a boat, cheaper than I do it.
And he likes them. Thank you, Susan. Yeah. Yeah. Got a motion? You have a second? Got a second for, uh, Aaron Wood, call the rope.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Seth Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy, Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Yes.
Motion carried, Lexington Housing Authority. Lexington Housing Authority, you wanna come on with? Lexington Housing Authority initially asked us for two hundred thousand dollars, and they went back to the drawing board.
We did, and now we're claiming, it's fifty thousand dollars. Uh, with more land, uh, we actually came across five acres of land for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's a pretty good price, we're looking at, what was it, one and a half acres? That is around around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so with the five acres of land, we're in the sort of being a housing. So with the five acres of land, we are potentially, we could probably put, I mean, one bedroom homes on that. And making more, we're looking at elderly, one bedroom elderly units for our veterans and our elderly, um, we can't do it, uh, with our HUD money that we have with the public housing board. So we have created a nonprofit, so our nonprofit, with our nonprofit, we can take land and sort of find grants. So, if we can purchase this land, your help, then we can get started on getting grants, or maybe getting some homes and helping our community, rehab and that.
That's through USDA?
USDA, we met, uh, with USDA and PHPA, not long ago, uh, the treaty for yes, but we had to get the nonprofit to sort of find the grants. So now that we have the nonprofit, we can get the land here to sort of find grants, to build some homes and, um, try to help our community, we're getting calls just every day, people needing somewhere to stay, a lot of elderly, those that can't afford assisted living, because it's too expensive, we can't do it here. The one bedroom units that we have, people are staying, you know, and so, and I mean, we're going, so this was another way that we thought we could go along with our community.
So the county on the land?
No, nonprofit, the building on the land. The house is up. It's an entity of the Lexington Housing Authority, it'd be under the taxi.
Uh, Trey Reagan owns it right now. Uh, he bought it from, uh, Jimmy Con, I believe, about two years ago, Trey's moved out of town, wanted to get rid of it. Yeah, I believe it was annexed in two thousand twenty-one. I spoke. Got a second? Lights? The manuals?
Kind of going out, Gattes and Tennessee have started the same process, and they've got some one bedroom units, elderly units, they're beautiful, I mean, this is kind of just like that. They'll be two sections, you guys, that's not, but this is the one bedroom work plan, and then also we will build some handicapped out. And it's also, but the simple one bedroom units, um, kitchen, laundry area. That's just a. Okay, because, uh, we didn't realize, and I didn't realize that, uh, living homes, they're actually four, I didn't realize that, we didn't realize that. We were looking at doing two units side by side, but we're also looking at the plan that living home has, and they have four in a non-profit.
Any more discussion? Got, got a call for the vote? Call the rope.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Motion carried. I'm not gonna make, go through the, if they're not here, we'll skip it, highway department?
Right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
The question is, uh, I would like to.
If you.
Tell this addition from the vote in the two blocks, three planes, we can only tell three from the place, plus three factors, what would that hold in? I don't believe in the, like you said. It's good, so. You know. Eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty, the road is home, thirteen thousand dollars, drivers, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That is the one road home, so. Full person, speak things about, I mean, for who they are. And I, I said this before, I like to, three different areas, but what I did is, we went all the way to dinner, and, and tried to choose the worst roads, the biggest travel, worst roads, wherever it needed. And all the way I put the prayers and the bad news, I was already completing the project, I'm sorry, some of those things. Fortunately, now with the weather, it doesn't like finish, we could just grant the four, we could do any of them. The two votes, there's one. The weather has to be four given, I, like that thought.
I know originally the offer funded was for infrastructure, Lord knows you need it.
So you know, for me, one, if we, without the increase, without the prepared, we're going to sing along, I know.
Yeah, the asphalt's going up, I know, uh, the past two years, it went up thirty-five dollars a ton.
We got a call today, Mr. Stewart.
And some of those were experts that I heard. Since then, since this last meeting, we've had all of those three roads, and these computers, they may have, should reflect that. I still would agree with you, nerds, all the new roads. Well, I don't have a straight work to put in. It's eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, roads, thirteen thousand dollars, drivers, three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred, two thousand, seventy-two cents for the quicker. Well, we can ask you a hundred questions. Do you know more about this than we do? Somebody did it for us, see, and then you're thanking us, because I bet there's a lot of that. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Yes, motion is second. Call the rope.
I got a question, I'm sorry. Before we charge this to the stand right now, so, priorly, we voted for two roads. And what was the amount?
Six hundred and forty-five, I think, and a whole hundred and fifty, that's two, two. I read on the quest, I believe, was somewhere between one thirty and twenty.
So. So, so what we got here, this two, motion on the highway department, highway department road is for two point one on top of that? Okay, that's.
Yeah. Let's take it around.
So what we have, we already voted.
You already voted on, basically, what, one million or something? And you subtract that off the two million that he originally requested, and that's what he's asking for tonight, is the difference of the one point two million.
Yeah, the one point two million.
So, the money of the other, other two roads plus this total will be two.
Two, yes.
Good question.
Bill in our front room, right?
Yes. Good question, good question.
I'd say, oh, roads, we've never really increased money on it at all, out there, really, they were saying we're behind. For the last thirty years, I've worked it out, I've never, knew of having increases, so, so we're basically operating off the same boat. With, with slightly increases in property tax revenue, which probably.
I'm in favor, I'm, I'm in favor of Dr. Stewart.
Mike Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Thank you much, county clerk. Well, he's a tough one right there, too. Unless they want you to come up first. Tosh is asking for six new chairs, a new server, some new sitting area chairs, credit card machine, and a fresh coat of paint. You got a motion? Any second, any discussion? Call the rope?
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson. Joe Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
A property seater, uh, I'd like to ask you guys to consider letting me present this, uh, this is, uh, pending, we're waiting on this stuff where he can move downstairs to his new location. Uh, new desk, chairs, two new computers and six monitors. Make a, uh, call me there, call the rope.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross. Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
All right, I, I don't mind presenting this other one, it's, it's simple request, it's, uh, new carpet for the courtrooms, and some new chairs for the sitting. Beverly's office. Tommy, your motion, I got a. Got a second? Call the rope? Light?
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Yes.
Tommy, I mean, Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King. Andy Anderson. Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross. Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Our trustee, similar, they're wanting some new flooring in their office. Uh, they have some, over the years, copper, they want to go to, uh, Laminar Hall. Tony, motion. Trustee's office. Every second. Joe, second, call the rope.
Jeff Dunnis.
Yes.
Tommy Payton.
Yes.
Tommy Stedall.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Mike Minus.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King. Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
All right, we'll move the other request to next month, uh, six point three, uh, Commissioner Peterson, you have the floor.
Woodman is a water chair project in the seventh district. Uh, location is off Oak Creek Road. Have a Oak Creek. Off that road down to the. Scottsville, the city of Scottsville, big river. Most of you know, Scottsville has a pretty significant problem with their water supply, and essentially that, uh, trying to keep over this land. So, the NRCS has approved land construction, like a little bit protection. And what I would like to, to move, mention is, uh, approve the sponsorship, uh, for that. And what we will do moving forward, uh, we would have, uh, Samaritan Prodigy, who is the NRCS, uh, director in, in this town, and municipal governor of Nashville, to come down and speak with, uh, all of us, give us a little bit more detail. We know that there are seven lakes in University Town, and, from my understanding, from a historical point of view, uh, that project was never really completed due to lack of funding. It very got this program started, and utilized funding back in the fifteen sixties and nineteen eighties, uh, funding for that for this type of program, so. Um, there are a lot of moving parts to things like this, and, uh, during the planning process, I'm just, I would like to, like to make sure that we consider, e- every negative impact and trying to prevent it, so we create a positive impact. It would be a mobile purpose, uh, surface water reservoir. Low income municipalities, uh, the funding is nine to ten, so, uh, NRCS would be the twelfth.
Low-income municipalities, uh, funding is nine to ten, and so, uh, NRCS would be responsible for nine percent, and then the sponsor would be responsible for ten percent. So, uh, that is, I'm very respectful of this at this point, and I would like this project, if you're ready to, give us a little bit more detail about what programs are about. Uh, but I think it's going to serve multiple needs across the world, for, uh... A very large population in the region. So I'm asking for, um... The commission to approve sponsorship, so that we can at least explore, um, planning, feasibility, and location. Now, trying to answer any questions you guys have, what would, what would a sponsorship mean, I mean, for that day committee? What a sponsorship means, I, I don't say if not, if a lot of federal government money, we need someone with the same, uh, same number as they do. And, uh, that's, that's why they, they request us to have, um, a legislative body to approve sponsorship. Did they just talk this before we go through a sponsorship, or? Um... It's possible, yeah. I'm interested in whether we did leadership commission category, or if we talked about the project, or if we're in that area. But, uh, some folks have talked about water facility around where I live, I live in a different place, you know, I enjoy, um, what is there, but I think it would be wise, I mean, to understand exactly, everybody's opinion, you know, the way to sponsorship. If there's a sponsorship in name, and you're voting, it's a better thought, you know, I, I would be by that. It's essentially just inter, 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 agreement, cross sharing agreement, um, then we would actually apply for one. And then budget planning and that sort of stuff, so, we wouldn't really be committed to any kind of funding at this point, uh, regardless of we approve sponsorship at this point.
Is that what you're saying, or are you starting to learn more, uh, who's responsible for the water?
Well, that's a good question, with all's, I'd like to look at some ways that we can, uh, clean the surface water, more than, I mean, than having a surface water facility constructed. TJ will actually pipe the water to a surface water, to already existing surface water treatment facility, purify it and then send it back out. So, uh, a surface water treatment facility necessarily have to be constructed.
I would be often that, uh, have they do need water, once I know my, or lots of the others, that like, cause of all the drinking water?
Yeah.
That we have, we had here in this town.
I would like to maintain the integrity of the land that surrounds the lake, uh, as best as possible, and not take away from the people that actually own the property. Still allow access for the public. We're looking at some ways to, uh, to trip swim up and run off as part of this project. I, I've spoken with a lot of people in that community, and they feel like it's a good idea, but, at the same time, you know, we have to sort of realize the cost of something like this. But I think it may be surprising, again... Scottsdale right now uses two thirds of its water supply on a daily basis, and they're still treating groundwater, which is a big problem, but, um... From a regionalization standpoint, surface water is really more ideal.
Nick, have you talked to, uh, Scottsdale or the other utilities around the area, if, if they're interested in managing the top of, uh...
I haven't, because I'm, I'd like for, uh, Ms. Crossley and Mr. Gudmundsson to come in and discuss that a little bit further, because what I have researched at this point doesn't really indicate as far as, uh, what, what that consists of.
Can you, uh, can you schedule him to come to the commission meeting?
Yes, they, uh, they are looking to come in, come into the January.
Okay.
But I will get with, uh, Mr. Gudmundsson, uh, afford him, so that he can be able to, well, bear it.
Any information that you get, if you want to forward to an email?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Well, TDA has been notified, uh, regardless, if VR, VRDA, uh, is involved, uh, because they do play a big role in the funding process, so they would be notified. This is entirely a cross sharing agreement, now, different uses have different funding, so, by what provision, it may consist of like seven to five, uh, cross share, whereas recreation would be more, uh, fifty-fifty, so. If you come and present information, could we do that in a work session?
Yes. You could. Nick, just give us some dates, and I'll, I'll work out with the, with the commission calendar, see what, what, if it works best, thank you.
Do we want to do, do we want to have a work session prior to next meeting?
Well, if, if it works on their calendar, it's all good, yes, if not, we could have a work session prior to February meeting, one or the other.
Do you have a date for January meeting?
It's the second Tuesday every month, yeah, thanks, Nick.
First question, I'm actually, nobody's talking.
Uh, I would like to go ahead and sponsorship, I, we decide to go ahead, uh, with the money. Just allows access to, uh... System for board management.
Later, have you had a chance to look at any of that in the package or anything?
I have not, I'll be happy to use that, that's no problem at all, um, Nick, if you got a deadline, or anything, can you do that?
Um, it's, well, I would like to move as quickly as possible, as your schedule will allow.
Sure. Let's talk about that just a little, y'all, so relatively new here, and I want to commend you for being so coherent and not having two hours sleep over the last four or five days, I'm sure that we may get...
At my house, I can, I'm sure.
You present exceptionally well on those links.
Yes, sir.
The attachments, I would add something to that, although everybody's moving, but if you do know that the creek might be still in there. And so, the, the original sand pile that they got water out of, it's already covered up, and so they're up to the next, either the second or the third, so, it's gonna be, uh, you know, water in the present dynamic, it's gonna be a critical situation before too many more years. And TDA's response to the, again, has been, it's designed to do that.
Yeah. I met with, uh, Lex and utilities Dave about water, about, uh, seeing what their plans are, and I, I think they've got some good things going, but, uh, always interested in looking for secondary sources.
And keep wishes also approached about possibly investing, about asset efficiency.
Yes.
That land was constructed, erosion control was not much, uh, it wasn't studied very closely, and now it's been a lot of, uh, erosion control, sediment control, steward management, and that kind of stuff, so ideally, a lake like this is constructed now, uh, it should essentially be sediment tank. As far as, um, but, when you start doing residential construction around that, and you don't implement those erosion control measures, it's gonna happen, it's just, it's just gonna happen.
There was, there was, uh, houses, uh, the, 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 I was like, I didn't have any place to put, red flag, it's not even good.
I really think this is a long-term fix, uh, it will take us some time to have it in place, but, uh, five years from now, uh, it'll be good at this.
We need to vote on sponsorship to write up, check on the grants and stuff, or we just need to wait for, hey, it gets better, let me just do it?
I don't have any issue with y'all on him to perform with sponsorship, it does not affect us any time in the project.
I'm not worried.
There a motion for sponsorship from Jack? Got a second? You got a second, Matt, uh, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Number seven, you got one? Uh, number seven, notary, do you get any notaries? I lost them in the paper. All right, so we have a list of notaries, have a motion to accept the notaries. All right, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Number eight, public comments, everybody in the public. It's Christmas, y'all don't have nothing to say? I, I, I've got a few things to say, I'd like to, uh, commend this board again for, uh, the Christmas spectacular things going on outside, uh, the ice skating rink's been a big hit, a lot of buzz last night on the porch square. The other thing that, uh, I'd like to tell you guys, uh, in your emails I sent tonight, you have a document from C-Tash regarding planning and commission, take a look at that and read that, uh, we'll be discussing that next month. Um, there is a parks grant they just released today, um, it's a fifty-fifty grant, I said in on, on the call the other day, so we are eligible now, if we want to apply for a park grant, we are eligible. Uh, so, get with me in the next few weeks, and we'll talk about projects, so, uh, see what we can get done, yes, sir, yeah, I'm sorry, come on up, I meant to grab you when you on the other.
This is a surplus river, and I'm asking, if you can do something about, maybe that water, one inch in the last year, it's a two thousand and five freight liner, getting under information, all on that sheet or something, on the dirt. It's surplus, we're, we sold on drink, sir.
Call the road.
Mike Myers?
Yes.
Lex Samuel?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff James?
Yes.
Tom Payne?
Yes.
Tommy Seagull?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
All right, uh, you also guys have an airport agreement that, uh, emailed out, take a look at it, we're gonna be discussing it next month, if you have any questions, get with me, um, I'm supposed to go out and tour the airport tomorrow, uh, they turned, they brought in their financials from last year, and then reviewing that. Megan, uh, before you leave, and the budget committee, I have, uh, the budget amendments over here on this table, can you guys sign before you leave? Uh, anything else?
Megan, would the housing change their voting, maybe?
Can you give us that, maybe, from my own, or from?
If we had approved everything tonight, it would have been eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven eighty-five, ninety-three. Say that again?
How much did it, how many hundred?
Eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven eighty-five, ninety-three cents.
That's when everything approved?
Yeah, if they had it in.
Okay.
That includes the farm can?
Yeah, that includes the farm can, and I took the max of five hundred thousand because we haven't had, but it hasn't been discussed yet.
Keep, keep in mind, we've got, uh, the election commission coming up, we'll be discussing next month also regarding all.
Yeah, there's no one you have ever prepared for election, do you have?
All right, you got a motion to adjourn. Motion's second, all in favor say aye? All opposed, I'm giving that.